Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call. See that all council members are present at this time. I'd like to welcome those of you who are watching with us tonight on City 56, as well as those of you that are here with us. I would like to begin this evening with an invocation. We've asked Councilmember Kelly if he'd lead us in that, and the Pledge of Allegiance will follow by Vice Mayor. Those that'd like to join with us in the prayer and the pledge, please stand up.
Our Father in Heaven, dear Lord, I do thank you for the very privilege of living on this mountain in the city of Cholo. I thank you for the privilege of serving on the council. I'd ask that you be with all of us tonight as we consider the business at hand, and we be able to think clearly and do what is best for the people of our fine city. We ask that you be with our forces, home and abroad. Guide them and direct them and protect them, bring them back to us safe. We ask. Thank you for the moisture we've received recently, and ask for your continued blessing. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly and Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. First item tonight is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on this agenda may do so at this time. Seeing nobody moved, a call to the public. I'll close, call to the public, and come back to the consent calendar. Items we have tonight is a proclamation declaring October 2016 Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and also a proclamation proclaiming October Fire Prevention Month in the city of Cholo, and the minutes of the study session September 20th ends of the regular meeting and the study session.
So move.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by a whole bunch of council members. Seeing, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. This time I'd like to read the proclamation here. One of them here, it says, "Whereas the city of Cholo and the Timber Mesa Fire Medical District are committed to ensuring the safety and securing of all those living in and visiting Cholo, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas fire departments across the United States respond to 369,500 home fires in 2014, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and U.S. home fires resulted in 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, representing 84% of all deaths in the U.S. caused by fire. And whereas knowing that working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and also knowing that one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, the smoke alarms are not working. The 2016 Fire Prevention Campaign is 'Don't Wait, Check the Date, Replace Smoke Alarms Every Ten Years, Designed to Educate the Public About Basic But Essential Elements of Smoke Alarm Safety, and Whereas the Message Is That Smoke Alarms Should Be Replaced Every Ten Years, Which Can Be Determined by the Date of Their Manufacturer Marked on the Back of the Alarm, and Whereas Timber Mesa Fire Medical District Personnel Are Dedicated to Reducing the Occurrence of Home Fires and Home Fire Injuries Through Prevention and Protection and Education.'" Now therefore, I, Darryl Seymour, Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, do proclaim the month of October 2016 as Fire Prevention Month. And the city of Cholo, and do hereby urge all citizens to find out how old the smart alarm, the smoke alarm, sorry, in their homes are, and replace them if they are more than 10 years old, and further urge all citizens to commend fire district personnel for their dedication and for their educational outreach efforts to teach important fire safety and prevention message, signed this fourth day of October. This time would like to ask the battalion chief if he'd come up and accept this in behalf of Dewey, if he'd come up in behalf of Timber Mason, anybody else who'd like to come up with him, and may do so.
You guys want to come up?
Apparently not.
They're standing.
They're right across the street.
Only have to talk three minutes, but... Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Way to go. Good job. Good job. Thank you.
That was a quick speech. Good job, Debbie.
You know, we appreciate what you guys do and everything, and it is something. You know, let's check the dates on those fire extinguishers and, you know, replace them if possible. That's great. Next item tonight, we have a new business, consideration of resolution number R-2016-24, adopting fees for manual read water meters. Mr. Cupp.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In early 2015, staff was contacted by a water customer concerned about the automatic meter reader equipment, meter reading equipment the city uses. The concern was that the radio transmitters in the meters produce radio frequencies which could cause health and safety issues. The solution the customer requested was for the city to remove the automatic meter reading equipment and replace it with a meter that would have to be manually read. Staff researched the health and safety of devices and found that other common household items, including microwave ovens, televisions, and cell phones, produce hundreds of times more radio frequencies than the transmitters in the water meters. Staff also researched other utility service providers to see how they are addressing these types of concerns. Staff found a wide variety of policies ranging from removing the device with a setup fee and a monthly premium for manual reading, and all the way to not allowing any device changes at all. At the October 29, 2015 City Council Retreat, staff raised this issue and presented a proposal to allow equipment to be replaced and charge an additional fee to manually read the water meter. Staff proposed a one-time fee for removing the transmitter and a monthly fee to cover staff time to manually read the meter, manually process and manually process the billing for this additional service. Staff recommends adopting resolution number R-2016-24, which set fees for manual read water meters at $25 for a one-time setup fee and a monthly premium of $10 for manual reading and processing the necessary documentation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Councilwoman Kukavas?
Does this cover our charges to do this, to do the manual setup and...
It's pretty close. The actual is probably a little bit higher than that. We didn't want to create a hardship for folks, but we wanted to try to be fair to the city as well.
Councilmember Kelly.
Do we have more than one request for this? Or is there only one?
We have only had a single request, and we haven't heard anything from that person for many months, so we don't know if that's an issue, but staff feels that we should probably go ahead and get some sort of process in place in case these requests come up in the future.
The... May I? Sure. When it's read by radio signal, does that trigger the entire billing process, or does it still have to come back and be keyed in?
At this time, we have, we call them handhelds, and basically the person that's reading the meter drives through the, drives or walks through the neighborhood and addresses each meter as they go by, and the address comes up so they know which meter they're looking at, and they collect that information. So the handheld talks to the meter, and the meter talks back, and they take a reading. Then they take those handhelds back to City Hall, to utility billing. They plug that into the computer, and it downloads all that information. So it's somewhat automated. In the future, at sometime in the future, we may have the infrastructure in place where we can just automatically read those without having someone going out on the route. But that's sometime in the future.
So, let me just make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. Our personnel will be in proximity of this meter?
Yes.
So they would, instead of looking at their handheld, they would go over, lift the lid, take a look, and record the digital reading on the meter?
Right. They'd basically write the reading down.
Write it down.
And then the other part of that, of the manual part of that, is then they would take what they wrote down, back to the folks that do the data entry, and they would manually key in to the billing system.
Probably the major part of the additional cost to the city is not even recording the digits, the numbers on the meter, but processing.
Processing that information, correct.
Okay. I mean, I can remember when we used to have self-read meters, and we would then read it once a year to make sure that it was accurate, and if it was under-read or under-reported, it'd be a substantial penalty. But that, even if I were the person and I called in City Hall to a number that was given me, that would put me straight to the technician, and I tell him my name and my address and my meter number, that's only half of it, maybe. Is that fair to say it that way?
Yeah, I think that's probably half of it.
Okay. If it was 10 bucks to pick up one lid, read one meter, then I want the job. But I want lots of them. You know what I mean? But I can see, it's where we are, and we're running into this with, of course, the power companies are getting this, and there's a lot of people very, very convinced that this is causing all kinds of health concerns, and the power meter right on the side of your house, next to your bedroom, the proximity of that to your bed, or to your head, if you will, has got to be much, much closer than our water meter, now wherever it's out to, you know.
Something like a cellphone, like I mentioned earlier, cellphone is thousands of times more. I think cellphone is 12,000 times more radio frequency radiation than comes off of one of these transmitters in our meters, and most folks don't have a problem holding that right next to their head.
But that's because we're having to go get in proximity to it. If we go to something similar to the power company, where it's signaling and clear from the residents miles and miles back to their base station, that'll have to be a much stronger signal.
You know, the gas company actually asked the city for permission to put some antennas on our water meters, and when they started looking at their water meters, they could see our radio transmitters as well, with that, just with the equipment that we have in place right now. So you can see what the frequencies that we broadcast a good distance away.
They can't read our meters and...
No, they can, they can see them, but they don't have the software to talk to each other, so...
When you say they can see them, is that with their eyes or on their equipment?
On their equipment.
It shows up on their equipment almost as an interference, or maybe it's separated enough not to cause interference?
It's something else out there that's unknown to their system, basically, but it's our stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Austin.
Thank you, Mayor.
So theoretically, right now, there's just only one person that's requesting this. If we pass this, that would have to have this $25 and then tell her $10 a month reading.
If they request that, we don't even know if that person is still a water customer here.
And everybody else that's on it, they, you know, they need to know that they're not going to get charges or anything else. It's just if they want a manual read, and that's it.
It's only if you request a manual read that will make the additional charges.
If there's nothing else, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I move to adopt resolution R-2016-24, adopting fees for manual read water meters.
You have a motion? Is there a second? You have a second by...
What number?
Councilmember Hatch.
Please clarify.
R-2016-24.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Cupp.
Thank you.
Next item we have is consideration of award of a contract for pre-construction services for wastewater treatment plant operations and control building. Mr. Cupp.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Cholo Wastewater Treatment Plant Project includes constructing and operations and control building to house operations staff, plant control equipment, and laboratory facilities. The building, the final element of the plant, will also house health and safety facilities, including a shower, eye wash station, and restrooms. Building's construction was removed from the larger project scope to provide opportunities for smaller local contractors. The project delivery method is design-build, process that uses a single contracted entity to perform both design and construction services. The contractor selection method is qualifications-based. In August 2016, staff solicited statements of qualifications for design-build firms to design and construct the building. The process followed Arizona Revised Statutes Title 34, wherein prospective companies submitted statements of qualifications, which were reviewed and ranked by a selection committee of city staff, a city council representative, and a licensed contractor. After the statements of qualifications were graded, the selection committee ranked Sutherland Construction as the most qualified firm. The scope of the pre-construction phase includes working with the designer and city staff to provide cost models, develop a schedule, and establish a guaranteed maximum price for the construction phase, as well as the design of the building. Pre-construction scope of services and a breakdown of associated fees are attached. Staff recommends awarding the contract for pre-construction services for the wastewater treatment plant operations and control building to Sutherland Construction in an amount not to exceed $9,400.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Austin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, I have a just, Bill, going back into what you were talking about, or what you just read, what's, explain to the people then what the difference is if our engineers would try to construct this or even draw it up compared to Sutherland?
Because we follow the design-build process, Sutherland is the designer. If we did a design-bid-build, basically, we would, either the city would design the building, which Shane and myself and Trampus are real good at designing infrastructure, but not building so much, so we would probably hire a designer to take care of that design. The designer would come up with a set of plans and specifications, and then we would hard bid that. We'd advertise it, and we'd get hard numbers for the bid. At that point, we would be obligated, I guess, to hire the low bidder on that, on that process.
The reason I'm asking is just, you know, to make sure that it's something that we, our engineering, could do or couldn't do to save us 9,400 bucks.
Yeah.
Or if it's going to cost us more with our loaded labor rate to draw that up and to try to build it compared to having Sutherland do it.
Yeah. That $9,400 price is about 3% of the project budget, and that's a very good number for the design phase, the pre-construction phase of design-build.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kukavas.
Just as clarification, so this is the initial phase to design. So the next phase is what?
That would be the construction phase, and we will come to council with either a change order to this agreement, which we probably won't do, for the construction cost, or a separate contract for the, for the construction, and that's after we come up with a guaranteed maximum price. There may be some negotiation, there may be some scope issues that we have to work through in order to make sure that our project meets or comes in under budget.
Didn't we already approve a guaranteed maximum price with these guys a couple weeks ago, when we awarded this contract to them?
No, we didn't do that. We did have a, in our advertisement, we did have a project budget that we told all of the folks that were proposing, just to make sure they understood how much money we intended on being the maximum amount that we could spend.
What was that amount?
That amount was, in the RFQ, it was 325,000. In the Sutherland proposal, it's 313,000.
Any other question? Councilmember Austin.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Kukavas.
If there's nothing else, I move to award the contract for pre-construction services for the wastewater treatment plant operations and control building to Sutherland Construction in an amount not to exceed $9,400.
You have a motion? We have a second by Councilmember Rittendon. Is there any other questions, Vice Mayor?
Real quick, Mr. Cupp, so the 9,000 won't come off that 313, then, right?
That's, that's all-inclusive. So the 9,000 is part of that 313.
Okay, thank you.
Number Austin.
You know, I just want to follow up with what the mayor said. Are we coming still under budget for everything that we're doing up there on that sewer plant?
Yes, sir. I think when we get the final GMP, maybe part of the report that we'll give when we come back to council is let you folks know where we ended up with the entire project. But at this point in time, we're tracking significantly under where we were at with the budget.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
I was trying not to, but I can't help it, okay? We're building a building that I know had competition involved in coming up with the price and how we analyzed it to start with, with staff or whatever, but we're building a building without the most expensive room in a house, the kitchen, right? And without multiple restrooms. I take it there's only one. I just, how do we get it to be reasonable, to be well over $200 a foot? I know you can answer that, so I'm asking you.
Sure. The, the building actually does have, because of code requirements, have a men's and women's restroom, and there's also a shower that I mentioned before. There's a couple of lockers and things like that. There is a break room, so there will be plumbing and some casework in there, and then the other expensive real estate in that building is a lab, and there's things like there's specialty explosion-proof glass that you have to have in the windows, and the casework, actually, I think we're planning on taking the casework from the tiny lab that we have right now for starters and moving it into that building, but those are the things that make it more expensive.
Good comments. Any other questions? See, a motion, we have a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Cupp. Next item is consideration of resolution number R-2016-25, rescinding previous lease agreement and approving new lease purchase agreement for road grader. Mr. Cupp and Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Which one of you are going to go with it?
The city's capital improvement program includes purchasing a road grader in fiscal year 2017 to replace the 1997 John Deere grader that the city purchased new. The grader has logged, the old grader has logged in well over 10,000 hours, hasn't blown, injured, and has other damage and wear issues. The cost to repair it to safe working order is estimated at about $80,000, which far exceeds its value. A road grader is an essential piece of equipment for maintaining city roads, shoulders, and ditches, and for snow removal. Since the existing grader has been out of commission, staff has been renting a grader as needed at a cost in excess of $40,000 in the past year. At its September 6, 2016 meeting, the council approved the lease of a road grader. However, when reviewing the lease details, staff learned that regular maintenance was not included in the lease as originally thought, and that was actually a question from Councilman Kelly to me, and I told him that yes, indeed, it was included, and it was not. So my apologies there for the misinformation. Consequently, staff met with Empire Equipment and learned that Empire would offer financing for the outright purchase at the same 3.2% interest rate as the lease. Staff also investigated other financing and found a loan program through National Bank of Arizona, offering 1.99% interest, which would save the city $12,900 over the 3.2%. Staff found that the loans were structured so that the city could purchase the grader for the original amount included in the 2017 budget for leasing the equipment. The remaining year's payments would be budgeted accordingly to the payment schedule. City finance staff compared three alternatives. The original lease financed through Caterpillar at 3.2% and the National Bank loan at 1.99%. Staff factored in the following variables. The value of the grader in seven years would be about $130,000, trading in two backhoes for $22,000, and making a down payment of $27,500. Not included in the analysis was the regular maintenance, including fluids, filters, and labor, which would cost less than $1,000 per year. Staff's analysis determined that the National Bank of Arizona loan was the best alternative. It has no prepayment penalty, and staff intends to pay off the loan early if the budget allows. Therefore, staff recommends rescinding the lease agreement with Empire Equipment and approved at the September 6 meeting and approving the purchase of a Caterpillar 120M2AWD grader from Empire Equipment with financing through National Bank of Arizona with a down payment of $27,750 and annual payments of $37,658.95 for seven years. The transaction will also include trading in two backhoes for $22,000. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions? Vice Mayor.
So the backhoe or the grader, I'm sorry, that's blowing up, is that any value to anybody out there?
If we took a look at value of 19, of that model grader out there on the open market and found that the retail on it's between 36,000 and 42,000, and the auction averages about 23,000.
So we're going to get something out of that, then? Or we're not trading that in, correct?
No, we're not trading that in, and that's operating condition. So we'd have to spend that $80,000, put that back into that machine to get 36 back out of it. So it's, it's just, there's no value in...
No scrap metal value there?
That may be what the value is.
Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Hatch.
I guess I like this alternative compared to the lease. We would at least have an asset that would be depreciated, but still retain value at the end of its life. So I think this is really a better, better solution.
Councilmember Rittendon.
I move to adopt resolution number R-2016-25, rescinding the grader lease with Empire Equipment that was approved at the September 6, 2016 City Council meeting, authorizing the city to enter into a lease purchase agreement with ZBN-A for a Caterpillar 120M2AWD grader from Empire Equipment in an amount not to exceed $293,361.78, including tax. Authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary for this transaction, and authorizing the city manager or his designees to sign all documents necessary for the delivery and acceptance of the equipment.
We have a motion. Did you get all of that in?
One second.
Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. You have a motion? Any other discussion? Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, just a follow-up question. Does this machine come with X number of training hours, or is it just so basic that our operators are familiar with getting in it and going, or...
Right now, we do have a couple of operators that are pretty good, and the controls on these machines are pretty basic and pretty much the same from machine to machine. I think actually you can change the controls on a Caterpillar grader so that they mimic the old John Deere controls as well. Is that correct? Rick's nodding his head, so that is correct. So, and we will be training more operators for that as well, but we do have a couple of operators that typically run those machines.
Just wondering. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other? Any other? Did I call for the vote on this yet?
No, yeah.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Appreciate efforts of council members who worked on this as well to get this changed. Appreciate it. Next item we have is item 7D, which is consideration of award of contract for citywide sidewalk connectivity project, city of Sholo project, R. 0516. Mr. Hymasaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city's 2017 capital improvements program includes three separate sidewalk connectivity projects labeled North Central Avenue, West Cooley, Central Avenue to Fourth, and Dusa Clubs, MPC, and City Park. The total budget for the three sidewalk projects is $171,700. On the 10 of these projects, it's filling gaps of missing sidewalks or multi-use paths to improve pedestrian connectivity within the city. To capitalize on the economy of scale and save on multiple construction costs, including different mobilizations, staff grouped these three projects into one. The proposed improvements in the base bid include installing 8,150 square feet of new sidewalk, 430 linear feet of new curb, ADA sidewalk ramps, and drainage facilities. This work is on North Central Avenue, Cooley, from Central to Fourth Avenue, and the south side of Dusa Clubs from West Whipple, east, heading east to Northland Pioneer College entrance. An additive alternate number one was also included to install an additional 7,200 square feet of sidewalk along the north side of the Dusa Clubs from State Route 260 near the Victorian, and that was heading east towards the City Park entrance near the Aquatic Center, and that would be awarded if funding was available. City engineer and staff completed the design, and the project's engineer or construction estimate was $169,000, and that was for the base bid and the additive alternate number one. Project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. And I'll go ahead and just read the combination of the base and additive alternate one, the total bid for the bidders. JWT Grading LLC, $157,378. Patchy Underground Excavating, $196,858. Sholo Construction Incorporated at $259,779.75. Handrawning Specialty Contracting at $267,202.25. After reviewing the submitted bids and the available funding identified for the work, staff recommends awarding the base bid and the additive alternate number one. Construction contract for the citywide sidewalk connectivity project, city of Sholo project number R. 0516 to JWT Grading LLC, and that is in the amount not to exceed the $157,378. The bid tabulation is attached. And just some additional information, due to the good pricing that we saw in that low bid, there is a little bit of additional funding available left in the budget. We're gonna possibly use that, we might use that, and identify another sidewalk project or maybe do some sidewalk improvements around a school area. So staff was gonna look into some of these options, and we may bring back a scope revision and possibly a change order to this contract to kind of capitalize on the pricing that we saw in the base bid. So right now, that's not a part of this motion, but just wanted to give you a heads-up. We might identify an area to spend right now, which is about $14,000 of extra funding in those accounts to a small sidewalk job.
Councilmember Kitten.
So there is no misunderstanding. This is both sides of the Dusa Clubs along the park and along MPC, Cooley, on both ends of the apartment complex, and North Central, down past the schools.
North of Paloma up to, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the entire scope of work for.
Is there a timeframe for the completion of the scope?
I believe the scope of work was 75 days, and if the additive alternate is awarded, it's additional 30. So that would be about a 100-day, 105-day contract for the work. I don't think that's gonna, the contractor doesn't intend to take that long, especially with winter coming, but that is what the contract is at this point.
Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I think it's gonna be a great idea to have those sidewalks down to Dusa Clubs there on both sides. There's just a lot of activity there, and I think there's been a lot of people who've been waiting for that to happen, and I think it's gonna be a great asset for, not only for downtown, but, you know, for people walking and trying not to walk on clouds of dirt and grass and anything else, and have something smooth to walk on. I know it's probably gonna increase our rotor skate and skateboarders going down there, so we're gonna, might have to watch that a little bit, but I think it's gonna be a great asset for the people of Sholo. So thank you.
Yeah, and actually, from State Route 260 to State Route 77, all the way through town, this completes the sidewalk, except for a really small piece right near Adams, almost a maverick. So this is a big completion.
There's a place for your additional.
Yeah, $14,000.
I need a little more than that.
Then you could brag about the whole side.
We're almost there. And actually, a good portion of that is gonna be done next summer when ADOT does their improvements to that intersection, they continue US-60 widening improvements. I don't know if they quite make it to Adams, but they get pretty close with their improvements there.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing that, I'll call for a motion. Councilmember Kitten.
I'll go ahead.
Councilmember Alsop.
Okay. I move to award a construction contract for the citywide sidewalk connectivity project, city of Sholo project number R. 0516 to JWT Grading LLC in amount not to exceed $150,378.
You have a motion? Second by Councilmember Kitten. Any other discussion? Seeing no other, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hymasaw. Next item we have a summary of current events. Any council member wishing to go over current events? Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended a board meeting for the Meals and Wheels and Senior Center. Just want to let everybody know that October is a good time for the Oktoberfest, not only for the senior center, but for everybody else around town, the Elks Lodge, and some other places. So please go out and enjoy the Oktoberfest in all the places that's all around the city of Sholo. But Oktoberfest for Meals and Wheels is Thursday, October 20. Celebrate the luncheon at the cafe at the Sholo Senior Center. You can either eat in or pick up, and it's $7. If you want to deliver to your business, it's $10, and lunch is served from 11:30 to 12:30. And you can call the senior center at 532-0656, and they'll take your request to either eat in or to have the food delivered to your house as brocks and pretzels and red cabbage and all kinds of stuff for the Oktoberfest. So please join in and help the senior center and Wheels and Wheels. And at this time, I'd like to put my condolences to the fellows' family. Larry Fellows passed away yesterday, and he was a detective up here in the White Mountains, and his son was a police officer here in Sholo that's retired, and just people that served this community for a lot of years, and I put my heart out for their family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. Any other reports? I'll just share a report here. This Saturday, October 8, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., at the Ram Valley Dome is the grand finale of the Route 66 White Mountain Geo Tour. This is a regional geocaching event involving Sholo, Snowflake, Taylor, Pintop Lakeside, Eager, Springerville, St. Johns, Winslow, and Navajo County. This free festive day-long event is open to the public, not only for those who participated in the Geo Tour, but all citizens. Will feature live bands, food, and craft vendors, a kid's zone, and door prizes will be given out every hour. An event flyer with more information is posted to the city's website. This past Friday, I had an opportunity of meeting with some of the council members and staff from Somerton City. They were up viewing our city, and they had an opportunity of going around with our parks and also with Mr. North on economic development. We appreciate other communities coming up and visiting and learning some of the things that we do. We learn from them as well. City manager, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. We just want to welcome Firehouse, Subs, Supercuts, and Nationwide Vision. They're the newest national chains to locate in Sholo. They're all three located in the building that was built in front of Home Depot along White Mountain Road. Remodeling of the new public safety building on Dusa Clubs, which began in early summer, continues on schedule. The budget, the project's on budget and is expected to be completed around March of next year. The general contractor, Low Mountain Construction, has hired a number of local subcontractors to help with the different elements of the project. In addition to that project going on at that location, the city's also, did also contract with APS to move the power lines underground. They continue to work on that. And the city crews are upgrading the water line in front of the facility. There's a lot of activity going on at that location on Dusa Clubs, but just wanted to let the council and public know that everything's on schedule and on budget at this time. For next week's fall break for the schools, the Family Aquatic Center will offer special hours, including open swim from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Our recreation staff's also accepting registrations for the fall playdays for grades eight, or K through six, which runs Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to noon for $35. Our BMX fall season continues with races until the end of October. And for any of those, for questions of the recreation department, their number's 532-4140. The recreation departments also will be presenting the Mountain Music Jubilee on Saturday, October 15, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Senior Field at City Park. They'll enjoy music by The Fools Hollow Band and Thunder Horse. There'll also be games for kids. There'll be contests for kids, and also food vendors at the event. Again, that's October 15, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other scheduling events or seconds of council here? Just remind everybody, as well as the public, that we do have our city retreat on the 25th that is open to the public from 9:00 a.m. through tell it's over, so welcome to attend that. Anything else?
Mayor, on scheduling meetings, just so the council's aware, next council meeting, we'll have our joint, annual joint meeting with the Airport Advisory Committee at 6:30. We'll send that out in the memo.
Seeing no other business, I'll adjourn this meeting.